Okay, good evening and welcome to the MCPS Board of Trustees meeting. This is Hatton Littman speaking. I'm just going to give you a quick Zoom tutorial and then we'll have the chair officially start the meeting. If you've joined us on Zoom tonight, you have a few controls in your lower left-hand corner. Take your cursor down. You'll see a button for unmute or start video. That's how you'll control what we see and hear from you tonight. If you take your cursor to the middle of the screen on the bottom, you'll see an icon that looks like a comic book call-out and it says chat. You'll be able to chat directly with me as the host tonight. The Board of Trustees will not see your chat and it will not be considered as part of public comment. If you'd like to make public comment tonight, you have a few options for how to do that. You'll need to raise your hand. If you're on a new version of Zoom, you'll take your cursor to the lower right-hand corner and look for a button that says reactions with a little smiley face. When you click on that, there's an option to raise your hand. If you're on an old version of Zoom, you'll click on the participants button in the bottom. It'll open a long white window and at the bottom of that window, there's an icon that says raise hand. When you raise your hand, you'll be put in a queue in order and we'll call on you one at a time. If you're on the telephone tonight, you'll need to press star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. With that, I'll pass it over to the chair.
Thank you and thank you all for being here either remotely or in person. At this point, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone and I'll take roll call and I'll, I'll take a verbal roll call just because some people are participating via Zoom and some people are participating in the boardroom. So trustee Holland is here. Trustee Agueras?
Here.
Trustee Decker?
Present.
Trustee Hobbins?
Here.
Trustee Lorenzen?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Mercer?
Here.
Trustee Old Person?
Here.
Trustee Sturbis?
Here.
Thanks. And trustee Vogel?
Here.
And I'm not calling trustee Wake's name because she let me know that she's under the weather and so she won't be here today. So we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance and Dr. Watson, if you don't mind starting us out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. I do have one request to make a revision to the agenda on, let me just get to the last page. On item number eight, on page three, it says trustee announcements. That's my mistake. It should say an announcement from the board chair just to remind us about the due date for the evaluations and the evaluation process. So it'll be a short announcement from me. So if we can just modify that so it's clear that we're not having trustee announcements. And so with that, is there any other requests to revise the agenda? I'm not seeing any hands going up. So the fourth item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular board meeting from March 30th, 2021. First, is there any request for a modification to those minutes? I'm not seeing any hands go up. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of March 30th, 2021? Moved by trustee Agueras, is there a second? Second by trustee Hobbins. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the board meeting of March 30th, please indicate by raising your hand and I will check for those raising their hand. It's unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to public comment. This item on the agenda under five, excuse me, is public comment on a non-agenda item. That is some topic that we won't be discussing tonight and taking action on. So we ask that in addition to the protocols that Hatton has gone through in terms of Zoom participation, we ask you to state your first and last name and spell either of them if it has an unusual spelling. If you represent an organization, identify that organization and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And so are there any requests for public comment at this point on a non-agenda item? I'm just checking to see if any hands are raised and I don't see any Hatton. Okay, and so now we'll come on, come to student trustee reports. And so I see, I'm not sure if Jayden is here yet, but if we can go ahead and get the report from Sentinel High School. So Malone and Daisy?
Hi. This is Ashlyn Everett. Jayden is unable to come to today's meeting.
Oh, well thanks. Then Ashlyn, why don't you go ahead and give the report from Big Sky? Thank you.
All right. So in terms of a quick overview, Big Sky has almost completed building the master schedule for the 2021-22 school year. With the change to the seven-period day, administrators are considering creative ways for students to be able to take all of the classes students have requested and this will include zero periods for a variety of courses. Big Sky's Eagle TV has completed and put out three episodes of video announcements. Students are learning important skills in this class and it has been a great way for students to learn what is happening in and around Big Sky. Our prom committee is hard at work getting ready for May 15th. They're doing a really cool t-shirt fundraiser where students can order a Big Sky shirt with their graduation year on it for just $10 and parents can also order for their children. HOSA will be celebrating the class of 2021 on April 20th by decorating the front entrance of the school with all the seniors' names and they also received a donation from Winko to purchase apples for the entire school on that day. In terms of athletics and activities, Big Sky's spring sports are well on their way with track and field, tennis, and softball. Go Eagles! Big Sky will host our, our annual all-season spring signing day on April 30th in celebration of our future collegiate athletes, an academic scholar celebration on May 12th to celebrate and recognize all students who have received scholarships. And finally, an armed forces celebration on May 19th to celebrate and recognize all of our Big Sky students who have committed to enter a branch of our United States service. A shout-out to Big Sky Softball who brought together student athletes, parents, and community members for a field day last month to update our varsity softball field. Be sure to check it out if you are in our area, it looks amazing. And then three Missoula schools will host the AAAC State Track and Field Meet this year on May 28th and 29th. If you or anyone you know is interested in volunteering to help out with this meet, please contact Michaela Anderson at Big Sky High School. And there's no prior experience necessary and you can help for one day or both and we need you to make our state track meet a success. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And thank you for subbing in for Jayden. We really appreciate it, Ashlyn. And then I'll check in with Sentinel. So Malone and Daisy, if you want to give us an update on Sentinel High School?
All right, perfect. So good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. Once again, my name is Daisy and I'm here with Malone, my co-trustee, and we're from Sentinel High School. At Sentinel, students have been working hard this spring. As we continue to progress through our second six-week block this semester, students are in-person five days a week, working in their fourth, fifth, and sixth-period classes. And in less than two weeks, we're going to cycle back through periods one, two, and three. So that'll be a schedule change. In sports news, Sentinel is busy as usual. Track and field is off to a great start with meets on the second against Flathead and ninth against Capital. This week, track and field is up against Butte on the 15th. Our tennis team is also off to a strong start this season. Our varsity played Bozeman and Belgrade on the third and the match against Butte, Glacier, and Flathead was canceled due to heavy wind, but they're ready to face Big Sky and Hellgate this coming weekend at Fort Missoula. So far, our softball team is undefeated this season and they're going to play Billings West, or sorry, they did play Billings West this past weekend and they're scheduled to play Glacier and Flathead this coming week. So now I'll turn it over to Malone with the activities portion of our report. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Daisy.
Can everyone hear me okay? Perfect. All right. So moving on to clubs and activities, Sentinel is busy as well. This spring, students from our model United Nations Club are preparing to compete at several virtual conferences. The USA MUN Invitational will begin on the 17th. Additionally, several students have qualified to compete at the Best Delegate Tournament of Champions, which will be shortly after this conference. Amnesty International just wrapped up their Fair Trade Chocolate fundraiser and is starting the process to look for new leadership for next year's club. They continue to take on a new humans' rights case each week. The National Honor Society is busy with their Peer Tutor Initiative. An NHS member will be matched with a younger student to help them succeed in class and NHS students were also recruited to coach Missoula Youth Track. Student Government is busy with spring activities as well. They are planning a week in May to celebrate seniors and make up for opportunities missed throughout the year. This will include dress-up days and other fun events. Student Gov also hosted a virtual talent show and we want to congratulate Jack Hubbard for his first-place finish. And Key Club is busy planning a prom for seniors in May. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Daisy and I hope everyone is staying safe and healthy and we look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you, Malone. And Waverly, what's going on at Hellgate High School?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Hi, I'm Waverly Winter and I am the student trustee from Hellgate. I'm first going to start my report with sports. So tennis, track, and softball are all up and running and this weekend tennis is playing against Sentinel and Big Sky at Fort Missoula. Track is competing against Helena, Hugh, and Missoula on Friday and softball is playing against Gallatin this Thursday. Tennis, track, and softball all have state at the end of May. And now moving on to clubs. NHS is welcoming the junior class and are working on a new service projects for the spring, which includes cleaning the Hellgate Courtyard, highway cleanup, and other service projects. SAFE continues to work on their greenhouse and recycling and composting and they're working on a Mother's Day fundraiser. Student Government is working on Spirit Week, Prom, Powder Puff Football, Graduation, and other fun spring activities, as well as electing new officers for the next school year. As we move forward into the spring, students and faculty are looking forward to hopefully meeting and gathering to make up the many activities and events that we've missed this fall and winter due to COVID. We have two and a half weeks left of the fourth, fifth, and sixth-period block, then we'll be move on to the first, second, and third-period block for three weeks. And we're also going to school five days a week. IP and AP students are getting prepared to take their exams later this spring. Thank you all for your time and have a fabulous rest your evening.
Thank you. And Claire and Eric from Seeley Swan High School weren't able to be here tonight, but they've sent in a report and trustee Vogel has agreed to let us know what's going on at Seeley Swan High School.
Hi, thank you. Eric and Claire say, "Happy April, everyone. Sorry we could not attend this meeting, we are currently at a track meet. This month is going well so far, the weather could be better, but April showers bring May flowers. Last week, Seeley Swan started the new block and we are excited about getting to eat lunch as a whole-school again." Track is off to a great start. Today, there was a track meet in Corvallis and there will be another meet on Friday, April 16th as well. The team currently has six boys and five girls ranked top five in some of their events. This is great considering the team has not had a chance to train on the field yet due to snow. It has almost melted off though, so coaches are hopeful to get on the field soon. Golf is also doing well. There are many more students participating this year and their next meet is on Thursday, April 15th. So far, two of the girls have auto-qualified for the state meet. More are expected to hit the qualifying score when they are able to practice on the local course every day. For now, indoor nets, fake tee-offs, and a golf simulator are what the golf team has to work with. Last Monday, the junior and sophomore class took the pre-ACT practice test. That Tuesday, the junior class was excused from class to take the ACTs test. We hope they did well. Student Council is busy planning a design for a new school sign they hope to install this spring. The junior class has been busy planning our 2021 prom. The date is set for May 7th and the theme is going to be Spring Ball. Lastly, the Leos Club has organized a highway cleanup on Sunday. However, it was canceled due to bad weather. Hopefully, they will be able to reschedule sometime around Earth Day. Again, we apologize for not being able to report this evening in person and hope to see you next time.
Thanks trustee Vogel. And I just want to thank all our student trustees who have served this year and unusual years, we all keep referring to it. You've been very responsible in being at every meeting and if you couldn't be here having a sub or making sure we do find out about what's going on in your high, our high schools. And we really appreciate your responsibility and dedication to the district, so thank you all. And with that, we'll move on to the Health Insurance Trust Fund report is in the packet on page eight. We see that each month and this is for the month of March 2021. And then 6C is announcements from Superintendent Dr. Watson.
Okay, thank you Chair Holland for just a few minutes this evening and I'll try to be brief. I wanted to make sure I continue to give you a COVID update and at the end of last week, we had seven new cases last week. That was up slightly from previous weeks. I think the previous week we had four new cases, so still lower than it was obviously earlier in the school year, but it's still higher than we'd want. But seven new cases last week. The active cases as of Monday, we had six active cases compared to the county on Monday had about 19 active cases per 10,000. Confirmed transmission is still higher than 50%, so 60% of the confirmed transmission was outside of school. We also had a fairly large percentage, 40% of unknown transmission where we couldn't trace it back to exactly where the transmission occurred, but we know 60% of the new cases confirmed outside of school. Last week, we had 45 students or staff members across the district that were considered close contact and were placed on quarantine for being a close contact. One thing of note related to close contacts that I just wanted to update the board on, we're following the new Health Department guidelines to a certain degree, which is the quarantine period can be reduced to seven days versus 10 days with a negative COVID, with a negative COVID test. So that's good news if we have somebody that is not showing any symptoms and, and wants to get released from quarantine a little sooner. In addition, any students or staff members that can show the two weeks past their second vaccine wouldn't necessarily need to quarantine as a close contact. So that's good news as well. A couple of other COVID-related announcements. As you're well aware, we completed our staff vaccine clinic about a week ago Friday and we are announcing, as of this evening, we sent out the email to our high school students. We're announcing some student vaccine clinics coming up, starting next Tuesday. We're going to host clinics at each school, each high school. Remember that clinics at this point are only open to 16- to 18-year-olds. The Pfizer vaccine is approved for anyone 16 to 18 or 16 or older. That's the only current vaccine that's approved for 16 and 17-year-olds. We'll be hosting clinics with the support of Granite Pharmacy, who helped us with our teacher clinics. So we are going to do sign-ups at each school. We'll be hosting those in the morning before school starts. I think our first clinic is at Sentinel next Tuesday. And the reason we're going to do it before school starts is that as required for 16 and 17-year-olds, they have to have their parent with them in order to get the vaccine. So we thought if we did it before school started, it would be easier for folks to stop maybe on their way to work. So those vaccine clinics are open to any student aged 16 to 18, starting next Tuesday and we'll be doing that at every high school and trying to get as many students vaccinated as possible. A quick MOA update, Missoula Online Academy. We are working on registration for that for next year. We currently have just over 200 students K through 12 that have enrolled in the MOA. The enrollment period is still open for a little bit while longer, but we were encouraging people to sign up now rather than wait. So right now, we have just over 200 students K through 12 in the MOA. And I wanted to update the board on a couple of legislative items that I talked about at the last meeting. So as you're well aware, our legislature is still going in Helena and, and I just have a couple of updates on bills that I talked about before. So one of those is House Bill Two. House Bill Two carries the majority of our state budget. It currently has passed the Senate with some amendments that are, and now we're waiting for the House to vote on those amendments. A couple of the amendments are, are very helpful for us because House Bill Two, one of the amendments restored some funding for, for the CSCT program. So we hope that that remains in House Bill Two. The other amendment restored some of the federal funding for our refugee families, which helps support our, our English-language tutors for our refugee families. So both of those amendments were in House Bill Two and, and we're waiting for the House to vote on that to make sure that those amendments stay in there. Couple of other bills I wanted to update you on. We have been tracking House Bill 112. This bill would require that public school athletic teams would be designated based on sex assigned at birth and it would prohibit transgender student athletes from playing with their identified gender. So House Bill 112 passed the House. It passed the Senate with a small amendment, but when it went back to the House, that amendment failed. So now that it has failed in the House with, with that amendment, now it goes to what's called a conference committee, which is a committee of some House members and some Senate members and they'll confer to try to agree on some language that could be accepted by both the House and the Senate. House and the Senate. So House Bill 112, still yet to be seen what will happen with that particular bill. One of the other bills that I talked about at the last meeting was House Bill 329. This is a special education savings account, which we had some concerns with because this would perhaps allow for some transfer of public money in the form of special education money that might be coming to the district. It would transfer that perhaps to a private service or a private school. So House Bill 329 was heard in the Senate and actually was tabled in the Senate Committee, so that bill appears to be dead as well. And then two bills related to ESER funds. So ESER is another acronym for our CARES Act money, our federal allocation of money coming in to support our COVID relief efforts. So ESER 2 is a bill that I know we chatted about last time, and that's House Bill 630. We're still waiting for that to be passed from the full Senate. It has made it through the Senate Committee and hopefully passed by the full Senate here within the next few days. And those ESER 2 funds can be expended then for anything that we may have had previous or might be expending this summer. For example, summer school, we'll be using some ESER 2 funds for that. And then the ESER 3 funds is the larger amount of those funds that recently came from President Biden's passage of the larger federal funding bill. House Bill 632 is the ESER 3 funds. That one seems to be a little bit further behind everything else. There has been discussion that the legislature may actually suspend meetings a couple of weeks early and come back later in the summer perhaps to discuss the ESER 3 funds. So we'll just have to wait and see on that one. Also pleased to announce that we've got two teachers in our district. Mrs. Chaney, who's a PE teacher, health enhancement teacher at Helgate, and Mrs. Struna, who's a health enhancement teacher at Meadow Hill. Both of these teachers were recently named as middle school and high school PE Teachers of the Year, awarded by the state organization, and so we're really excited for those teachers. I have been told, too, that we have an elementary teacher that's also been named as Teacher of the Year, which is amazing because we've never had three teachers at the same year be awarded this wonderful award. I don't know who the elementary teacher is yet, but as soon as I find out, I'll let the board know. And then the last thing I'll just mention is we are hosting one more strategic planning session next Tuesday. That's April 20th at 6:00 PM. We'll be finalizing some of the work that you all have looked at with regards to the core purpose and the core value. We'll also be able to hopefully dive a little bit into some of the goals and strategic objectives that we'd like to see in the next three to five years. So if you're available next Tuesday, 6:00 PM on Zoom. Thanks, that's all the announcements I have. Thank you Chair Holland.
Thanks. And, excuse me, now we move on to 7A1, which is to ratify a grant award from Zero to Five Missoula County, United Way of Missoula. This is an elementary action item, and Pat's going to provide some information. I saw that Mrs. Frank is the principal at Lowell is also on Zoom. And a little background, in terms of the language, it's a ratification rather than an approval because there's been a modification, so Pat and Mrs. Frank can explain that.
Thank you Chair Holland. So yeah, this is a nice grant to support Lowell. The award was made last month, and the agenda item is to accept, to ratify acceptance of that award. As referenced in the agenda background and the attached grant application summary, the funds will be used to support an implementation of a home visiting program. This would provide funding for training materials and time for staff to help engage kindergarten students as they transition to Lowell. So Barb Frank knows much more about the program than I do, so maybe if Barb wants to add any more details, that'd be great.
Thanks, Mrs. Frank. Anything to add? I think you're still on mute, Barbara.
There we go.
There we go.
I'm not used to this computer at home. It's not my school computer. We're super excited about this grant from United Way. It allows us to really move forward with our community center vision so that we are connecting with families before their kids get to Lowell. We think it's super important for us to start building those connections with families to make them feel comfortable at school. And the home visiting program is a national program with national trainers that our teachers are excited to get trained this spring, and then this July and August, they'll head out to start meeting with families. And our goal is to meet with every family before they set foot in school for kindergarten. So we have a number of opportunities, including our roundup activities this spring. Then we have our home visits this summer, and then we'll have some sort of event in August to really welcome those families and make connections. And this grant covers all of the costs of that, from our training to paying our teachers for every visit that they do over the summer on their own time.
Are there any questions for Pat or Mrs. Frank? I'm looking for hands raised virtually. I'm not seeing any questions, so the recommendation is that the trustees essentially ratify, the approval of the grant that was awarded from Zero to Five Missoula County, United Way of Missoula County, and it's in the amount of $20,000, and it's been designated to Lowell School. Is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to do so? Moved by Trustee Mercer. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Old Person. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Decker?
Thanks. I'm not going to vote on this topic because Zero to Five Missoula County is an organization that I am very involved with, but I do just want to express how exciting this is. It's not the first time that MCPS has explored home visiting as a model. In fact, Rattlesnake Elementary has a lot of experience with the model, and it's exciting to see it as part of the community center project. And it's certainly my hope that successful implementation of this model could lead to utilizing it in other schools across the district, especially our other title schools.
Thanks. Any other comments? I'll just add one comment. I just want to thank Mrs. Frank for her leadership at Lowell School. She has been doing amazing things there, and to understand the importance of making sure that in-kind mean kindergarten, since we don't have early childhood education yet, is so important. So thank you for you and your staff for coming forward with this and partnering with, let me get the right words, Zero Five Missoula County, United Way of Missoula County. So thank you very much. Is there any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised, so all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees present, so thank you. Then we move on to 2, which is to authorize Resolution 2021-9E Declaration of Election by Acclamation. And this is an elementary action item as well. And Pat, if you want to explain what this is about, we see these moving toward election year in some years, and in other years, we don't.
That's right. Thank you Chair Holland. So this, this is an action item. It's asking the board to approve the resolution that's attached on page 10 to the agenda. We had scheduled an election for trustees to elect the two open trustee positions. The deadline for candidates to file past with two candidates filing for the two open positions. So per state statute, the trustees can declare the election by acclamation. And so the resolution that's attached sets forth the authorization, the declaration of election by acclamation. And as reflected in the next agenda item, will those trustees that are elected by acclamation are standing trustees, and they'll continue to serve out their term until they are qualified on May 12th, when we administer the oath of office.
Any questions for Pat? Seeing none, then the recommendation is that there's a motion to approve Resolution 2021-9E, which authorized the Declaration of Election by Acclamation for the two open elementary trustee position. Is there such a motion? Moved by Trustee Agueras and seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? I don't see any hands raised. So all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve Resolution 2021-9E, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all K-12 trustees present. Then we move on to 3, which is the high school trustee positions for Districts B and C. At this point, it is information, but Dr. Watson and Pat and I thought it would be a good idea to explain what's going to happen because it's going to take some additional steps, I think, beginning on May 11th or 12th, that first meeting in May. So if you want to kind of walk us through that?
You bet. Thank you. So this election was also canceled, but for different reasons. Here, there were no candidates for the two positions, one position in District B and one in District C. So the steps will be to declare those positions vacant, and we won't declare them vacant until the term of each position expires, and that will be at the, following the election, even though one won't be held. And so on the meeting on May 11th, I think I said May 12th before, but May 11th, we'll ask the board to declare those positions vacant. That essentially initiates the statutory time running, the 60 days for the board to appoint trustees to those two open positions. And at the meeting on May 11th, we'll talk a little bit about the process and the timetable for appointing the two positions over that 60-day period. So as mentioned, this is information only, and more to come on May 11th.
Any questions for Pat? Not seeing any, so we'll see what happens on May 11th. So we move on to number four, which is to ratify the transportation agreement with Target Range School District. This also is an elementary action item, and as you'll recall, we saw a different but similar action item by state statute. When a bus has to run from one district to another to pick up students, it requires action by the boards. And so this is a different one, but required by state law. So Pat, if you want to explain that this is actually going into Target Range rather than coming out of Target Range?
Yeah, it's exactly right. This is the opposite from last time where we were asking permission to enter Target Range to pick up our students. Here, Target Range is asking permission to enter our district boundaries to pick up one of their students. And so on page 11, you'll see an agreement that we're asking the board to approve. This would be in agreement with Target Range. It's similar to the agreement that you saw before, except we're on the other side of the equation. And the statute has referenced, as mentioned, the, it's required that the trustees enter into the written agreement that we would then share with the county superintendent's office. And happy to answer any questions.
The only thing that I would add to Pat's comments is part of the reason that we're asking you to ratify the agreement is that obviously we don't want to stop educational services for these students. So we've allowed the action to happen, pending board approval, of course, but the reason it says ratify is that we're still continuing to allow this to happen, hoping that the board will approve this evening.
So just to clarify, so the student, there was no disruption in the student being able to attend school? Okay, thanks. I see you nodding yes. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to ratify the attached agreement that's found on page 11, which authorizes Target Range to enter MCPS service area to pick up and drop off a Target Range student? Moved by Trustee McDonald. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Hobins. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? I don't see any. So all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to ratify the attached agreement found on page 11, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is, oh, and I'll fix something in just a second. And so that is approved unanimously by all trustees present. And if we can go back to 7A1, if I can just make a correction to that. In terms of the vote, Trustee Decker abstained, and so it was approved by all K-12 trustees present with Trustee Decker abstaining, and that's my error, so I hope the minutes can reflect that correction. Then we move on to two items that are related but involve different organizations, and the first is to approve a memorandum of understanding entered into by MCPS schools and the Missoula Education Association. And so Dave Rot is here to give some background information about this proposal, that we would approve the adoptions of the terms outlined in the proposed MOU, which is found on page 12. And I believe there might be other persons that can provide some additional information.
Thank you. The, both of our unions, the MEA, which is the Certified Teacher Union, of which there's about 750 members, and the MMCEO, which is our classified, has about 67 different job categories and represents about 400 members, approached us several months ago with a proposal to extend the terms of their respective collective bargaining agreements. We entered into a three-year agreement. We're in year two of that, and by its terms, both of these contracts would expire June 30th of next summer. Both of the unions approached us and asked if we would be agreeable to extend the terms of those contracts for an additional two years through June 30th, 2024. The terms of their desire is to keep the terms and conditions, the writings that are in those contracts, with the exception of wages and remunerations, which we would then negotiate next spring. So we reviewed it, and it's, both of the MOUs are fairly simple, and I think from our district standpoint, we were supportive of them. We did invite both Casey Baloo, who's the president of the MEA, and Sherry Posma, who's the president of the MMCEO, to kind of explain to you what their reasoning was and why they approached us with this proposal.
Thanks, Ms. Baloo. Are you, oh, I see, you're on.
I am. Thanks for having us this evening. I think, you know, we all know our document is not short by any means, and we were very excited to come to terms for a three-year agreement in this last negotiation cycle. When talk of COVID started to hit partway through that first year, we all know that it complicated things, and we heard some stories from other locals that were trying to bargain during times of COVID, both last spring and this year, and heard some interesting stories. So I actually brought up this idea way back in October, being a middle school teacher who likes to plan ahead a little bit. And we brought this forward in February officially at both of our unions at the same time. It does a few things for us as we've seen our issues take a backseat to this kind of in-the-moment problem solving that COVID has brought upon us and kept us cycling through for the last lots of months. We definitely would love to have, you know, those three solid years that we had hoped for under the hard work that we did to negotiate the contract. This will allow us to continue to focus on those problem-solving efforts and to make sure that COVID doesn't muddle the water as we start to talk about and go into negotiations with contract language that will stand the test of time and last potentially for decades. And of course, a push for two years also puts us into a non-legislative year, so we don't have to wait for them to get done as we finish and wrap negotiations. So I'm sure Sherry Posma and Carleen Hathaway will fill in anything that I missed. But yeah, we're happy that you're entertaining this motion, and we definitely feel that it's in everyone's best interest across the board.
Thank you. And just to keep it clean, I'll go ahead and entertain this motion first and then hear comments from what is going to be discussed as B2. So any questions for Dave or that he could refer to Ms. Baloo? Trustee Agueras?
I'm just curious if wages aren't a part of it. What sort of stuff is?
I'm just curious if wages aren't a part of, what sort of stuff is, I mean, it's probably pretty adept, but can you name some stuff that is in the?
Length of workday, early out Thursdays, discipline, how we approach all of our leaves, from sick leave to sabbaticals and everything. We've done a lot of extensive work over the years, which is, you know, why we've been supportive of this proposal. And I would also, one thing I should have pointed out, this does not prohibit us from working with the union on other MOUs or agreements. So sometimes during the course of terms of a contract, there's a need for us to meet, for sometimes very individual reasons, to modify the terms of the contract. And so that would still be something we'd be able to do even with this in place.
Any other questions from anyone? I have just one question. So under the term, or under the agreement, then negotiations over certain topics, in fact, probably a lot of topics, come off the table because they've been negotiated, and it's, I'm getting the impression both sides have been satisfied with those terms, and so leaving open the opportunity to negotiate over wages and the word remuneration, which took a lot of discussion at the agenda setting, meaning for what remuneration even means, and it's got a lot of meanings, but it's a term of art, so that's fine. And so is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. We usually spend, Pat worked for negotiations on, we usually spend a significant amount of time on language issues, and then the final thing that you touch on is wages and remunerations. What we'll be doing this time next spring is just be looking at that second part, the wages and remuneration, not worrying about the existing language in it.
Thanks. Any other questions based on my question? Seeing none. Then the recommendation is that the trustees approve the adoption of the terms outlined in the proposed memorandum of understanding that is found on page 12 in the attachment to the agenda. Is there a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Decker and seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? I guess I'll just say thank you to both the union and to Mr. Rott and his team for coming through with this and recognizing that basically it's not a lost year, but it's been a very different year, a school year, and almost a second school year. So thank you for thinking ahead. I appreciate your work. And so, any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of the terms in the MOU that is found on page 12, please indicate by raising your hand. And I see that all trustees present have raised their hand, including trustee Service, who has raised her hand virtually.
Chair Holland, I'm going to abstain myself, so.
Okay. And so, oh, thank you. I should have asked you about that. And so all trustees, we'll just do a revote. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of the terms outlined in the proposed MOU, please raise your hand. And that is all trustees except trustee Agueras, and all those opposed, and all those abstaining. Trustee Agueras has abstained. So thank you for that. Yes? I'm sorry, I can't hear. I'm guessing the reason he's abstaining is because his wife is a teacher and would be impacted by this MOU.
That's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Right, that's, thank you for that point, trustee Lorenzen. Then we come to B2, which is a memorandum of understanding entered into by MCPS Schools and the merged Missoula Classified Employees Organization, which is MMCEO by acronym. And so it's found on page 13. And Dave, if you want to indicate if there's any significant differences or is this part of the same conversation?
It's the exact same MOU, with the exception it has the name change of the organization. And I know that the president, Ms. Posma, is here, and she may have some comments as well.
Ms. Posma, did you want to add anything to what Ms. Ballou had indicated?
Well, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to say, you know, thank you. Of course, Casey said everything that I certainly needed to say. But along with that, I just need to say that this has been probably one of the most trying years that I've had in my 34 years with this district. And I think we are all trying to get our feet underneath us. And I believe as we move forward, it might take us a while to become back to normal or what we think is normal. And so I think this is breathing room for our team, our members, and for the district. And so we're just hoping that, you know, that everything is okay, that we go forward with this, and we would appreciate a yes vote from everybody. So thank you so much.
Any questions from Ms. Posma or Dave? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the adoption of the terms outlined in the proposed memorandum of understanding that is found on page 13? Moved by trustee Hobins. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Vogel?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I think this is a very smart move. I think it's a very strategic move on your part. I've heard about the possible changes coming down from the legislature, and being a teacher myself, we have also tried to do the same thing with our board. And so I understand the position that you're in, and I applaud your being proactive. So thank you for presenting this to us.
Thank you, trustee Vogel. Any other comments from trustees? Or discussion? I'm not seeing any other hands going up in the room or on Zoom. Is there any public comment? Not seeing any hands going up. Excuse me. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the adoption of the terms of the MOU outlined on page 13, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you very much. And then we move on to three, which is to approve wage and salary increases for summer and seasonal positions. And Dave, remind me, we see this not on a regular, regular basis, but in terms to keep up with costs, we do see making adjustments to salaries.
Yeah, I think we do pretty much come to just about every April with the summer seasonal rates. They're the hourly rates, and these are non-union positions. And so we come to each year, and we review the hourly rates that we have. And to your point, yes, we also look at what the market is. And so these were the suggested modifications and changes brought by the business office and by our food service for increasing wages for this summer.
And so there, just to clarify, there's not a document that we need to approve, but rather it's just the individual rates listed in the agenda itself is what, or the raises in the rates is what we're approving?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? Trustee Mercer?
So what accounts for, just the basic sketch answer, why is it 50 cents for one and $3 for another?
It's a great question. What I did is I had each of the departments evaluate what they felt would be a wage that they would like to have increased. So the food service one, Stacy Ross Miller, who's our food service coordinator supervisor, reviewed the rates and indicated that she believed this would be a sufficient raise. Likewise, Burley McWilliams for O&amp;M made suggestions for those rates as well, based upon his market analysis.
Trustee Lorenzen?
I guess, can you explain where in our budget this money comes from, and is it offsetting another expenditure?
I'm going to turn that one over to Patrick.
Yeah, so we, there really aren't a lot of workers that fit under these rates that work in the summer. So what we do is we will accommodate existing staff that work in summer positions, and they carry their existing pay when they work in the summer. So it's a, so the budget impact is pretty minimal, given the fact that it really doesn't apply to a lot of folks, but we do have it budgeted within our general fund. Was there a second question? Sorry.
Trustee Decker?
I guess that sort of got halfway toward my question, which was how these rates compare to the comparable jobs that we have for these positions during the school year, or people who are in these positions in a more permanent basis.
And Dave probably can answer this better than I can, but sometimes the rates reflect where the starting rate is under the collective bargaining agreement for certain positions. So there, I think, is an effort to not jump over rates for existing positions that are in the, already working during the, full-time during the year.
And that's correct. So they're not going to be paid less, they're more. And for example, while it's not on this list, paraeducators during the summer that work during the summer school actually get paid their hourly wage that they would, and actually on July 1st get that cost increase that would occur under the contract. So we have a memorandum, and I should apologize, I can make sure you get it, that indicates how we handle the MMCEO members that may apply for these positions and maintain their hourly rate. But to Pat's point, also, these positions, there are many of these positions, there's like three people or two people that occupy them during the course of the summer.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. So the recommendation is for a motion to approve the raise in hourly rates as indicated in the agenda itself for the summer and seasonal positions as described above as well. Is there such a motion to do so? Moved by trustee Agueras and seconded by trustee Decker or trustee Lorenzen. They had their hands up at the same time. And so is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Not seeing any. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the raise as identified within the agenda in hourly rates for the summer and seasonal positions as outlined above, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to four, which is to approve the personnel report. And this is the routine personnel report, I'm assuming that we see almost every month. Is there anything you'd want to point out on it, Dave?
Nope, it would be a routine monthly report.
Okay. So the recommendation is that the trustees, there is a motion for the trustees to approve the items on the provided personnel report. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Agueras. Is there any board discussion? And just a caution, we don't talk about individuals in the report, but otherwise, any comments? Trustee Lorenzen?
I wonder if you can just tell us how we are doing as far as the teacher shortage? We were hearing about it before COVID. So where do we stand now? Do you feel good about hiring when it comes to the time this year?
I do. Right now, we have all positions filled. First week of May, we're going to do what's called the arenas, where we'll be posting the positions. I know that Russ is still working on the MOA staffing and our enrollment. When that's finalized, we'll know what our staffing needs are, and we'll be posting those positions for our existing staff, both MEA and MMCEO members, the first part of May. And then if we were unable to fill those positions that we have within the district, then we will go out. That said, we've actually already been posted for almost the last month, our any special education positions. The union, again, we work well with the union, they've allowed us to advertise those positions in advance of the arena process to make sure that we can get applicants for them. Yes, on some positions in the district, not teaching, that we are still struggling to try to find people and not getting applicants, but we'll continue to beat those bushes and see what we can find.
Any other trustee comments? Not seeing any. There's a seconded motion to approve the items on the provided personnel report. All trustees, or I'm sorry, first, any public comment? And once again, we don't allow for comment on individuals in the report. Any general public comment? Not seeing any. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the items on the personnel report that's provided, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we come to item number eight, which, as I indicated, which we modified at the beginning, it really should say something like, just a reminder that we had determined that we would have Dr. Watson's evaluation take place in executive session at the end of the next board meeting. And so I know Tracy has sent out the evaluation tool we've been using, and she's confirmed all trustees have received it. I have received some back. And so if you can get them back electronically or just mailed to me or even to the district, and I will pick them up by this Friday. And if you need more time, just let me know. But I'd like a little bit of time to compile them before we have our next board meeting. Any questions about that process? Not seeing any hands go up. So thank you for that. And then we move on to public comment. Again, we provide for public comment on non-agenda items at both the beginning and the end of our board meetings, just in case someone was not able to attend at the very beginning of the meeting. Any public comment on a non-agenda item that anyone would like to talk about and give information to the board that may or may not require board action at a later date? I'm not seeing any hands up. Hatton, is that correct? Okay. And so then we, oh, trustee McDonald?
Okay, did we bypass the trustees come announcements?
No. At the beginning of the meeting, I explained that I was modifying it because it was an error. We had determined not to have trustee announcements anymore as part of the agenda. And so it really should have read it was an announcement from one trustee, the chair, reminding everyone about the process for required evaluation of Dr. Watson.
Okay, so then I guess my comment, or maybe I need to have some direction. I received a letter yesterday.
Trustee McDonald, we can't take comments from trustees. So if you have a comment, I would suggest you share it with Dr. Watson, and if it's appropriate, at a different point.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before I call us adjourned? And it's trustee Hatton? Or, sorry, lost my mind.
Carleen Hathaway has her hand raised.
Great. Ms. Hathaway, go ahead and make public comment, and if you can identify yourself by first and last name, and keep your comments to three minutes. We appreciate hearing from you.
I'm, it's less than three minutes. My name is Carleen Hathaway, H-A-T-H-A-W-A-Y. I just wanted to thank you, Rob, and every single person involved with our COVID vaccination clinics. It literally brought a tear to my eye when we got our notifications from you, Rob, that the district was going to be doing this. And then to be able to get my son and daughter-in-law involved in it as well, I get a little teared up because I really appreciated how much effort and energy and organization went into putting on those clinics. It was truly amazing. And all the folks that you had greeting us, like Sherry and Casey and Dave and all the nurses and all of the people at the tables checking us in. And it just was the most smoothly running operation I have ever seen for something that large in an undertaking. And I just wanted to say my very grateful thanks for everything you all did to do this for us. Thank you.
Thank you for those public comments. Any other public comment? See any others, Hatton? Oh, okay. Thanks. I don't have a line of sight to Hatton, so I apologize for a bit of a hesitation. And so with that, the meeting will be adjourned, and I just will say it's been nice to see everyone's faces, where you're either not tiny or an avatar. So appreciate everyone being here who could be here. And with that, we'll have our next meeting in two weeks. Thank you.